Yes, we are ready now, Mr. Speaker.
I'd like to call the Ibisbee Committee to order. Today is a special meeting. Today is Monday, May 6th, 2019. In attendance today Stanley Stern, Denise Loath is excused, Rod Page, Kathy Snodden, Carrie Gepson, and Stephanie Peavy. We're joined by Ron, who is a candidate for our Director of Tourism for the city of Bisbee. And the purpose of our meeting today is to interview Ron and to discuss your qualifications as our committee. I'm going to introduce our committee. Carrie Gepson, I know you have met. She is the Director of our museum, prominent in the tourism field. I have asked Fred Millard to join us. Fred was the Vice Chairman of our committee until recently and has been very active in tourism for the city of Bisbee and owns a hotel here. Rod Page is one of our leading businessmen in our city. He is the owner of several restaurants in our city, as well as a hotel, and a predominant employer of our city. Stephanie Peavy is a grant writer and on our committee and is specialized in grants for the really development of our city. Kathy Snodden is a merchant in our city and owns a store in our city. David Smith, I expect you have met, is the Mayor of our city?
I've not met him.
You have not met him. And so the committee is... Would now like to move and call the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak? I don't see some, so we'll move forward. The purpose of our meeting is that we have discussed as a committee and have brought forward the whole position of Director of Tourism and increased both the responsibilities as well as the pay for that position. We felt it was one of our most important positions in the city. Tourism is responsible for approximately forty percent of our sales tax revenue and is our leading industry. So this makes it critical for us to get a Director of Tourism who can carry on where we have been, as I'm sure you've looked at our history, and bring to the table certain skills and aptitudes that will help continue the progress we made. So I guess my opening question to you is, what skill set do you bring for this job?
I have a breadth of experience in tourism. I've worked as Art Director for Grand Canyon Association for almost ten years. At Grand Canyon National Park, I was the liaison with the National Park Service. I've prepared the advertising as well as all the public information for the National Park Service. I'm speaking to all of these and I'm looking at Sam. He was the first to ask. Also, I've worked at Eastern Washington University as the Director of Publications and was in charge of advertising, student recruitment, fundraising, nonprofit foundation, marketing. I could go on. Alumni relations, publishing. I chaired the university press. At Holy Cross Health Services of Utah that segued into Columbia HCA, I worked in the Mark, I was a Creative Resource Director. That's kind of a creative term for marketing and advertising, print communications, internal and external. There were numerous physician practices, care facilities, and flagship hospitals throughout the state of Utah. I coordinated advertising. I worked as liaison with an advertising agency. I restructured their campaigns and brand such that discontinue, realigned resources to achieve economies of scale throughout the state. Worked with different hos... I should speak to all of you. Throughout the state, worked with different administrators, sales teams, and product teams to coordinate their advertising campaigns. You may have looked online at some of the material. There is quite a bit, I understand, so it might be daunting. I brought some physical samples that are of that ilk that might make it a little easier to understand. Advertising campaigns that were coordinated throughout the year. Discontinuing services that weren't... The return on investment was poor. I think before I mentioned they were advertising heart care on billboards and I don't think a lot of people come down the freeway thinking, I need to have a transplant or a bypass. So we discontinued and realigned some of these resources. In the first year, I saved them over $250,000 just by looking at the books and realigning and then coordinating all of the different hospital administrators. I don't want to go on a patnoseum about hospital systems, but they were doing their own advertising. So it was all the way from business cards and phone book ads to larger print and advertising campaigns. So presently, I'm with the Department of Game and Fish through New Mexico. I do everything that I just mentioned and more. All of these things we've done electronically as well, especially now, more with Grand Canyon Association and with the Department of Game and Fish because of more recent technology. So, my goodness. Is this like boring you or should I just continue?
No, I mean, no, it's very, very helpful.
I'll make the evening long if you like.
No, it's very helpful. Carrie, do you have a question?
Yeah. It's kind of a later question, but I've been here for a while and I noticed that our earlier marketing efforts were really focused on our mining heritage. And then with Ibisbee's support, we rebranded and the arts community got involved and we went very heavy to an arts perspective, kind of leaving the mining heritage behind in some ways. And I think that because we... Bisbee has two very, very strong art and history traditions, especially to market, to people that will appeal to, to the whole kind of spectrum of culture rather than just one piece of it. I'd like to see those brought together. And my question to you would be sort of, what are your thoughts on trying to bring various traditions that we have and strengths that we have in this community for marketing purposes? And how, what were some ideas you had that you wanted to play that around?
At Grand Canyon Association, we started an annual plein air festival. We had a competition and invited notable artists who used the Grand Canyon as a topic. We had fundraising auctions as a result. Part of their participation is they would donate a piece and then we would have an auction to the general public. Operated the advertising and communications for the Colt... Some of you may have been to Grand Canyon. The Colt Studio has an art museum gallery down below where the Colt Brothers operated. So coordinated about five shows per year. And this is in a horizontal management structure. A small nonprofit doesn't have a lot of money to burn. So when I say... I'm saying we, as a group, coordinated these things. So I was part of the committee that did the selection of the art exhibits that were going to occur with the National Park Service, so everyone was involved. Also, publishing books and online material to publicize. Coordinating lecture series. So in answer to your question, I think incorporating the arts is an essential component of what you offer the public. That's not diminishing the geology. At Grand Canyon, we covered geology, natural history, cultural history, the arts, and letters. Invited authors to speak that were notable in their fields. We communicated to the community, the Grand Canyon community on speaking. We're doing the same thing at the Department of Game and Fish. Besting the employees to become spokespeople as well for our party audiences. Would you like me to go on?
What about the history heritage historic preservation part?
Oh, my goodness. I've done exhibits and special programs on... For instance, you may have seen the history of Native Americans. I did the annual report for the Navajo Nation and worked with them to define who they are, what they're doing, why it's important, why it needs financial support. Gosh, that's such a broad area. I could go into... Am I being boring to you guys? Am I answering the questions that you need me to answer effectively?
We're going to go around the table and...
I mean, I could go on and on about cultural history. It's... I love it, so...
Fred, do you have questions?
Might I go after other people? I've got some fairly specific questions.
Sure. Rob?
So you've had a lot of opportunity to see Bisbee for what it is right now. You've seen us online. You've seen our social media. You've had a chance to meet a lot of people in town probably. What, in your opinion, are we missing?
Your online presence looks a little bit dated. I'm not disparaging at all. You've done a great job. You've got a good presence, but it's not current. As I look at it, and it's a little bit hard to navigate. So...
And how might you address the short, short things initially?
To put more current information out on a timely basis, focus to specific audiences. It's all over. For instance, if I look at a calendar of events, I'm seeing the entire year segmented all at once instead of teasing me and saying, this is what you can do now. Or if you want to wait till fall, you should look here. Instead, I'm getting the whole all at once and it's a little bit overwhelming. But it's good. It's quality. Whomever has put that together has done a good job. It's comprehensive.
Do you have the skill set to make all of those adjustments?
Well, it depends on... That's why I came by to visit. I wanted to see the equipment that you're using and who built it and how. I assume that it's WordPress site?
No, it's Wix.
Okay. So...
The museum is independent. We're not city.
The city is discoverbisbee.com.
Okay.
That's the visitor's center site.
Well, I thought you were all interrelated. One big happy family.
No, no, David is not only the mayor, he's also the President of the museum. Carrie is the Director of the museum. It stands there and it is affiliated to Smithsonian Institute.
Were you talking about which website?
Discover Bisbee.
Discover Bisbee.
And the museum site. I just thought everything was related. You're all together in one happy sailing into tomorrow.
Stephanie, do you have a question?
So I should answer that, though. I'm not familiar with that particular program. The sites that you've seen I built, if you've looked online at my portfolio. So I'm familiar with WordPress themes, et cetera. I'm a quick study, but I'm not familiar with Wix.
Stephanie, do you have a question?
I have several questions. I picked one. Okay. Let me welcome you here, Ron.
Thank you.
Marketing and promotion obviously has to be targeted. Now, how do you figure out your target group? How do you get information about why people are coming here, what they're doing, what they like? Now, give me a little part of an answer. Rob and I did some interviews on the streets, very briefly. What, eight, ten interviews that you did? And got feedback from different people about why they were here, how long they were here, where they came from. But how do you do that on a larger scale so that you can effectively target your audience?
How many of your people go through the museum and the mine tour? Almost most of them or just a percent, a smaller percent?
We have about twenty thousand a year on the mine tour, which is about forty-five, forty-eight.
So maybe a little less than half.
Well, but you're assuming then that the... Yeah, no, because not everybody goes on both, either one of them. Some people just come and do a day trip and hit the shops.
A long time ago, we did a, you know... Have you visited both? We had to do that in the afternoon, so we didn't get... We find out people that they went on mine tour in the morning. It was about twenty-five, thirty percent overlap of the two. But I think the biggest attraction of Bisbee is Bisbee.
Right.
The last information I think I've seen about visitation, total visitation in Bisbee is about two hundred to three hundred thousand a year.
And you're... How are you quantifying all of that? Through how many people stay? How do you know?
That was my research. That was from a study from Northern Arizona University. I think 2005, '08, something like that. And they did some people on the street. They did a variety of metrics to come up with that. We don't have a coordinated center of information for this. Couple of the things that you mentioned, lodging stats, for instance.
They did some predictive modeling.
Yeah, okay, that's what it's called.
We have a number of people who've come just for the ambiance in town.
Right.
And who may not go to the museum or the mine tour but are attracted to the city. Part of those attractions came from tremendous amount of press we've been getting. People have come in. I had a major radio personality in town a month ago who said, this is wonderful. It reminded him of Sausalito, I mean, that type of thing. Do you have another question, Stephanie?
But I'd like to go back to answer your question.
Well, when we did these interviews, we had on a smaller scale people coming for the ambience. People often mentioned the historic features of it. And we did different interviews. We had people who were on spring break. We had older people and everything in between. But how do you take this information of these two hundred thousand people that are coming and get a grip on why they're coming? And really, what is, what are the most salient items that are drawing them? And then you spend money, more importantly.
We get our shamanic tools usually is how we do it. So the metrics you have available, so if it's lodging or restaurants, if you can collect that data from any source of the museum.
Well, I think we collect data, but it's not manipulated. You don't have an essential source to play with the data, to input it and play with it.
So who owns it? Where is it?
Well, I've got zip code data for all of our visitors.
Okay. And so there's some information...
But I don't have the... Not my priority at the museum to find programs to manipulate that.
To consolidate all of that.
Well, on a smaller scale, a project that was near and dear to my heart was the Bisbee 1000. We did an economic analysis. We did a post survey of people who had come and questioned them about why they came and how long they stayed. And more importantly, how much money they spent. So we came up using multipliers and all the other economic voodoo stuff that there is. Conservatively, the impact of the Bisbee 1000 is about 500,000 injection into the economy of Bisbee. And I would like you to look at that on loan from Cynthia Conroy.
Oh, I thought you were going to give me one.
I think we're low on them. But that was an example of how we got a handle on it. How are they coming and why are they coming?
So you have some data already established, yeah?
We have data in various places that are not pulled together. But I think the figure of two to three hundred thousand people is probably correct. And people coming for various reasons. Many people come to see where their grandfather, great-grandfather started when he came to the country and things like that. Kathy, do you have a question?
Yeah. Ron, how will you use social media to market Bisbee? And please be specific as to the tools that you think are critical to use.
Well, I looked for press to use as to start with and I didn't find a lot. So defining your audience is first, segmenting that. Obviously, press is really important given our tourism base. I assume that you already have some A and B lists for contacts, that you're sending out information when things are important and you're trying to develop a little more interest in visitation. Obviously, you're going to use Facebook. I've gone to Instagram and Printrest and all that, and it's the devil's playground. There's so much stuff out there that it's almost impossible. I signed up for your news feeds on the RSS stuff, so I can get a little bit of that. But I think the general public doesn't really get that sophisticated. So defining your, finding a way to capture your audience's information a little bit more. At Game and Fish, we're blessed by, we sell licenses. And part of what we've done with the license system is to capture data about those people that signed up for the license. So we've incentivized it. If you go online and you give us some of your information, we'll help you in this process and we'll even personalize it and call you if you need that kind of attention. So by doing that, we have some audiences that we know we can directly communicate with about specific things. Here, you have so much going on in such an abiding form that I think if it can be defined through visitation to your two primary locations, that's one way. Instead of, even if it's, if you sign up and you become a member, we're going to give you something, whatever that might be. It might not have to be of physical monetary value, but something, any way to start building lists that you can communicate with and hopefully have them come back so they don't just pass through one time and then see you. They become a part of your community, an extended community. A presence online that's pertinent to the audiences that you serve. You go to the demographics. You know, you've lived this. I've only visited. You know what type of people are coming here and spending the money. So speak to those audiences. Obviously, there's travel industry that people go to when they want to book a room somewhere. I met a couple from France this morning and they use Travelista or something, I don't know what to call it. There's so many of them out there, which has some... Thank you. You read my mind. Which has its good and bad sides. But it is, they do exist and they're part of the world. So you need to communicate with them as well and incentivize for them why they should represent you a little bit. They're in it for the money, obviously. It's a capitalist world. Pardon me?
Kathy, you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, I guess I was kind of looking at how do you introduce Bisbee to new people, not how do you communicate with existing, you know, existing visitors? And how do you use social media to do that, to bring in new people?
Well, you're going to have to get the... You've already got the press going. So cultivating that a little bit more on an ongoing basis, wherever your events are, advertising that in a manner that... In a timely manner that can attract attention for those audiences that are supporting your efforts most. So...
But using what tools?
Well, if you don't have a way to communicate with your audiences on regional markets specifically, just sending it out to the world at large. I mean, you're already doing that right now. I think you have to define where the highest visitation is occurring hierarchically and then communicate with those audiences. You've got to have some means to define who it is, whether it's regional Arizona and New Mexico or the larger metropolitan areas on the East Coast or the West Coast, whatever it is. So you have to define a little bit...
How would you do that? I think she's asking for some specificity. How would you do that?
Well, if you don't have a place to start, you got to define... You have to see who's been here. And if you have some stats that you can say, okay, we've got... Three percent are coming from the East Coast. Twenty percent are coming from the West Coast. The majority are coming from the Southwest.
Right, the majority of people come from Tucson.
Right. That's where I'm headed. So those are the markets you're going to communicate in. You're not going to send out a Facebook blast to the entire planet if you can avoid it. But if you can find some means to communicate with those specific markets, you're going to be a little bit ahead. At least you're going to have an audience that's interested, that can travel here, that's aware of you. I don't know. I've only been here a couple of days, guys. I need a little more of a...
I was looking more for just social media platforms that you might use and how you would use them to draw different segments of the population.
Facebook, Instagram, Printrest, the standard stuff. You guys already have them there. They just need to be a little more honed with a little more message. Just walking down the street today, I mean, every place I look, there's a photo opportunity. Do people do that? Wandering around? It's just a natural. You'll be part of this. If you want to put a Printrest up, we'll help you do it. Here's how you do it. Click here. You can add your photo and we'll make you famous. You only get your first email. We have no liability.
Mary, do you have a question, Rob?
Actually, I'm curious about your experience with travel writers in film industry.
It's limited. The film industry, when I worked at the university, I managed for videographers and film. A little bit at Grand Canyon, but it's very modest. It was mostly keeping them from walking on the things, ARFAX that would be damaged, herding cats, crowd control. I didn't set up the contracts. Those came to me. I managed the bids when I was at the university with the advertising agencies and the service bureaus. I worked with service bureaus for radio spots and a little bit of television when I was with the hospital system.
So you don't have a list in your back pocket?
I do not.
Darn it. Fred, do you have a question?
Yeah. So, you know, in the last five years particularly, there's been a real shift in how people find areas, Bisbee as well as others. And there's been a significant move from print, business centers, onto electronic media and stuff. So that's one of the questions. I'm very interested in that kind of stuff because the previous director really expanded that for us. Facebook, Instagram, Pinterest, a variety of things. So my particular interest is in those areas and asking you how you would do some of those things. For instance, have you had, have you ever done a social media campaign? A specific campaign?
Yes, we're doing it right now with Game and Fish.
So using what?
We use Facebook. Primarily, we use our website. We drive them to the website. We use Facebook to send out information. I mentioned that we have some audiences that are defined. So we're sending emails to them, little alerts with links.
Okay.
So we, there's a little bit of Instagram. It's very sly. Our audience is a more mature audience, so we're not using Snapchat or any of that ilk.
So when you're saying you're sending out stuff, are you doing a specific campaign with a start and a middle and an end?
Fishing reports is one thing that we do on a continuing basis. So every two to three weeks, we send out to different parts of the state information about what fish are where, what's going on. That's a simple one. There's a lot, it goes up in degrees. But that's, that's something that we do on an ongoing basis. That's every other week throughout the year.
So that's not...
Send out Facebook.
I mean, you're... What I'm trying to get at is you have you had, have you supervised an actual campaign where you start and you want to do... We want to reach everybody in Albuquerque that are bass fishermen. And you target them through Facebook. Have you ever done...
We don't use Facebook to target them because we already have them captured within our system. For those that are not, we put on events.
Okay.
And then we have outdoor advertising as well as Facebook posts that are going out. But we're not... That market is small enough that we can catch. We also put on events. So there'll be fishing clinics or...
Yeah, you have the very, yeah, you have the defined...
Or we have a, an outdoor show once a year where we invite the general public for free to participate in sporting events that are related to what we...
And you get that word out to them through Facebook posts as well as emails?
It's predominantly done through outdoor advertising and newspaper and Facebook. It's all of the go. But we have, we have the ability to send out... We send out press releases. It's covered in...
No, I know, but that's...
So it's in the calendar.
I guess I'm trying to make a distinction between traditional ways, press releases, email blasts, as opposed to some of the new media, you know, Facebook, Instagram and that kind of stuff. So when you, when you say you use those... So when you, when you say you use those Facebook campaigns, how do you, do you analyze your success? I mean, do you look at your metrics that, as the?
We do a little bit with Google Analytics. Most everything is, the hub is the website. All the information is provided there, we're driving everything back to the website. So when we send out a general email to the Las Cruces and we contact, oh shit, this is hard. We send out general Facebook, we send out Facebook posts of everything that we're doing for those specific markets that we want. Oh gosh, I don't know. We send out emails to those community leaders and enterprises, whether it's a Cabela's or, we have segmented lists that we send those to.
Okay, so, again, well, no, sorry, but it's, it's kinda been more stuff for some of us that we've been interested in. So when you look, when you do a Facebook post, for instance, do you take a look a week later and see how many likes you have, how many pass-ons?
Yes.
And then how do you, what are the, what's the metrics that you use to see whether your posts on Facebook have been successful?
The amount of places that we sell is our weakness. The amount of visitation, the amount of licenses that we sell. We're not as sophisticated as you may be, although you're so much smaller. Our primary goal is to develop interest in the fishing sports and to sell licenses. So that's what we're doing to those electronic media.
What we're doing is we're trying to find somebody that has a whole range of skills, including print, but also that is conversant with not only Facebook, but several other of the social media things, that can do a campaign and that can take a look at the, say, Facebook. Instead of just likes, instead of just engagements, how many conversions there have been. And that's why, that's why I'm trying to be as specific as I can with you, to see, trying to gauge your depth of knowledge, I guess.
A web person that runs all of those stats and we get those reports from you.
Okay, so you do not send yourself?
Personally doing that, but I'm looking at that. So we know what's working, it's pretty simple, fair, really. Does that help?
Yeah.
Good, yeah.
So, let me clarify then. In your job, you do not do the social media stuff. Somebody else does the social media stuff, whatever the stuff is.
I write the content, I brand it, and then I provide it to a web designer. So anything that you see on that website, if you've visited the Department of Fish's website, more than likely, it originated from me.
Do you write the Facebook posts?
I don't write the individual posts, there's just too much going on for me to do that. So if you look at the, if you look at the magazine, but a lot of the information that you're seeing there in those posts is derivatives from the articles that I read.
Everything's gotta be original.
Right, right. So a fish, a person in fisheries is squeezing the eggs out of, and sends in a picture of the trout, and sends us a picture, and we'll attach that to the information about the fishing report. Or we'll send out a little picture on Facebook or.
Okay, do you do that or there's a web person?
We have one person that does that, so.
Let me, I've got a couple more, but I don't want to monopolize. No, let me open up, it's one of the questions on the floor. Carrie, you have a question?
But it's kind of a follow-up to what Fred is saying. I mean, we're a small community with limited resources. So it sounds like you're coming in as the tourism director and you would need this social media savvy person to work for you.
I can do some basics. I understand it, I do it. I'm versi, but I'm not the one you want to sit in front of a computer all the time, monitoring all your blogs and posts and all of that.
No, but that wasn't the direction I was going, it was kind of. We have a website, you said it needs to have some updating, are you capable of doing that?
Yes, I'm not familiar with the particular program that you're using with WIC, but I'm assuming that.
Say we have a big coming up.
It would be similar to what I've done.
August fifteenth, and you wanna get, you wanna do your social media, whoever it's going to, probably not old people like me. How would you, would you be doing that or would somebody else need to come in and do that for you?
I can write the content and post it, but I'm gonna need to see what it is we're talking about before I can say yay. I can jump right in and do it, it's gonna be a bit of a learn curve there, I'm sure, because I'm not familiar with the particulars of how that was designed. But I'm assuming that it has the standard front ends that I can go ahead and post things, that I could rewrite information, update it on a timely, continuous basis, right? Have you worked with it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There's a user-friendly front end and then there's HTML on the back end.
Right, but I'm not a programmer, so I'm not gonna rebuild your site a lot.
No, but it's just sort of, if you have a social media campaign, are you capable of getting that out? Or do you give the content to someone else to get that up for you?
It's both, but primarily I rely on other people because there's so much other stuff.
Right, in this job, you are gonna be the alpha and the omega. There's no way, other way to describe it, I mean, you have to do it all. And you would be expected to do it at a level that is considered very sophisticated in today's media market. Rob Page has done a lot of work necessary for his restaurants. Rob, do you have some questions?
I asked that question, I think you answered it pretty well.
I would love to see your front end. I'd feel a lot better. This needs to be a fit for both of us, I'm not gonna bamboozle anybody, that's not why I'm here. I wanna know that we're both on the same.
Social media. Same social media site.
I'm not the social media person, I'm not that person.
I'm at your service if you wanna show me sometimes. Tonight, tomorrow.
You're gonna be dealing with a lot of travel writers, both domestically and internationally. One of the things is that the person who had your position before was working night and day with them and would figure out what would be most attractive to them and then work with them very carefully. That's resulted in some major articles and also resulted in the eighteen top places for people to visit in the world for Farmer's Guide. You know, that, so we've come back to some relatively sophisticated things for a little town. And I guess, as I look at it, when we talk about it, one of the areas that you're gonna have to consider is all of these things. Because again, you are the person. And there's no staff, and there's nothing that you're gonna be able to lean on. And we're gonna expect you to walk through and do miracles. I mean, that's kinda where we're at as a community.
I'm glad you have reasonable expectations.
Walking on fire with water shoes. Let me see, a little bit more general questions. So Bisbee's ad budget is around fifty grand, hopefully. The budget process has not been completed, that's why it's allocated somewhere around there. How would you, just knowing a little bit you know about Bisbee, how would you allocate that budget?
I just don't know your priorities, what do you want?
Well, what would you, what would you think the priorities of a town like this would be? I mean, I know, it's a hard question because you've only been here for a little bit and stuff, but just give me a sense about, so you got fifty grand to do.
That's not a lot.
Yeah, no kidding.
Is that tied up with the AOT funding?
Uh, yes. Yes.
Because that's, that's sort of designated.
I didn't wanna get into that.
Right, and it has different types of choices, so.
I just wanted to find, I just wanted to find out, in terms of, say if you had fifty grand to spend for a city like this, how would you spend it?
Oh my goodness gracious. If you have certain segments of the population that are going to spend a little bit more to help support your efforts, they need to be on the top of the list, whether it's lodging or whatever it's going to stay here. Fifty grand is not a lot to do general advertising, you could blow that overnight. And that's not operational expenses, that fifty grand is for promotions.
Straight on marketing.
Mr. Chairman, can I elaborate a little bit on that fifty thousand dollars? Most years, we're able to leverage that and get some of that about AOT. AOT, if AOT approves, they will spend an equal amount of money. So your advertising budget could effectively be a hundred thousand dollars plus. They help leverage our advertising budget every year by working with the major advertisers in that field, by bargaining them for discounts. Most of the ads we buy are fifty percent booked.
And you piggyback with the county on some of this?
On some of it.
So you have a hundred thousand booked, you do?
So you have particular times of the year that you said visitation's the highest and other times when it's the lowest, do you just look, are you good with that? Do you wanna maximize when it's the highest and live with it and see that it's a seasonal thing that you, or change the time?
I prefer to start concentrating on the lowest since that's the predominant part of the year.
Is it, is it a reasonable expectation to increase visitation during those times?
It's a lot of really fun.
Okay, then that's one thing that you can do.
How would you do that though? What tools would you use to do that? Or would you use print, would you use social media, would you use?
Well, social media isn't gonna cost you a lot if you're doing it in-house, so that's a, that's a given. Tucson and Phoenix are your primary markets, you've mentioned already. So there's gotta be a way to get things out to those markets other than traditional advertising media, because that's too expensive. If you have some potential to get some radio or something going on out there to reinforce what's going on in your social media so you can keep saying hashtag Bisbee or whatever it is, or go to our HTTP, et cetera. You have some notable in the community that could be spokespeople. These are sort of open-ended statements ordering on questions. If you do, to invest them in the process and make them ambassadors for you. I'm trying to find things that don't spend that hundred thousand dollar net right away. So volunteerism. If you have some, I mean, I went on one of the mine tours and there's a gentleman named Mark, he's just hilarious, he would be great at this. So if you can make little Youtubes or whatever and start sending those out, those don't cost a lot. We need some stats to define where those markets are that you're talking. If it's, if it's the sun lakes in the Phoenix area or wherever it is, they have local communications going on within their communities as well. Maximize those if you can, because that's almost a freebie, I would imagine. They would love to have any, anybody that would take an interest in their community. At Grand Canyon Association, we do lectures because we had the ability to use the authors. They wanted to sell what they had written, they wanted to be noted as authorities in their field, whether it was a scientist or a geologist or a cultural historian or an archaeologist. So take them out and do the dog and pony if you can. There, we're talking hundreds of dollars. Beyond that, if you have specific events that are, that are big draws that you know are going, and these are gonna be in your high seasons anyway, probably. You already have the museums and tour, so they're a given. You don't need to advertise that as much. But the selling points, if, if people are traveling out of the Phoenix and Tucson area to avoid the heat, they should come here. How many people know that it's cooler here? That's a great little advertisement.
That's, that's good enough, I mean, I got my, I got a sense of that.
So you could put something on the Weather Channel, everybody looks on your eye. How much, you've tried that?
A whole bunch of us have, there is times we've tried.
Kind of never blossomed.
Now that Jenny's gone.
But I don't know how much that would cost, I'd have to research that to see.
I think a lot of these ideas that I see, it's, it's through lack of manpower for somebody to carry through on them. There's a lot of attempts, but you can only, if you're working or you're really busy with your job, to be able to take over another job to, to do that. I mean, there's a lot of great creative things that have been done.
Right.
But to sustain them, you need somebody to do that work. And that, in terms of setting up some of these kind of promotional opportunities, I think would fall under your position, it's sort of what we're coming back to and.
Do you have a good volunteer base through your community at large? Or is it more about herding cats?
Are you talking about a volunteer base with a skill set that can do some of this stuff?
Bisbee, Bisbee has a very strong volunteer base, but the turds, yeah, there's a huge need here that is really filled by volunteers. But it's not, not with the city's tourism efforts.
But you have a library that's amazing, you've got this tour that's amazing, you've got, I mean, they, those things are world-class. They need to be portrayed. They're accept, you already are doing this, my goodness, what would you need me for?
Because we have to pull it together. One of, one of the things that we have, we have to sell this community, we have to sell this community for a couple of things. For tourism dollars coming in, which helps our tax base. We've gotta sell our community as a place to retire. It's an excellent place because of our low cost of living and things. We have to sell our community for its ability for, to spend. If we get people to spend overnight, here's how this works. If we get people to spend overnight, they'll spend about three hundred dollars in our community. If we only get them down for about six hours and they're out, which is one of the things that we have to contend with. So what we need to do is to look at our community and build it as an overnight place to come and stay. Things like this, which begin to get at the heart of it. Because people could come down to Tucson and spend their six hours and drive back.
Right.
What we need them to do is stay overnight, spend some time in our hotels, our restaurants, that type of thing. I mean, we look at this, I look at the tourism as our major, major source of business in our community. And how do we perpetuate that? We've gotten some very good stars, you met a couple from France, that type of thing. But we have to keep that umpa-pa up and that's hard.
Well, you need enough going on that they have to spend the night because they're gonna miss it if they don't.
That's right.
Beyond the festivals and events that you have, those in-between times, I'm not sure, I need to know more.
There's something that goes on here virtually every weekend.
And some of us do, do commercials on Channel Four.
Okay, what's the NBC channel?
You know, so some of us, small, like Bisbee Africa Five and some of the other merchants all get together and the mine tour. And we do commercials all year on Channel Four to bring people down from Tucson. That goes on constantly. But it's all dependent on those people getting together and doing that.
So do you get, you're having to buy a portion of that or you're getting PSAs? Or how do you get these commercials on?
No, you spend, you pay.
Businesses are paying. They're going, they're going in on a big buy.
Okay, so you already have an advertising budget campaign set up that you.
No, this is one thing that some people do. It's not a campaign, it's structured.
So you don't.
We have, we have.
We have, we have a number of great nonprofits that are merchant, basically like merchant associations. And the city has not in the past done a really good job of representing them. We do not have a chamber of congress anymore to represent them. So they are representing themselves and they aren't necessarily coordinating between each group. Each group is representing their own thing, whatever that is individually. And so when Kathy's talking about Bisbee After Five, this is a entity of businesses that put on an event once a month. And they collect dues or whatever and they pay for this.
So that's how you're paying for that?
Correct, so we need to
Merchant donations and then, you know, the Stereaphyme Cynthia generates the money for hurry then.
So they're also in a position such as yours, there'd be the ability to come up with reasons why people could potentially provide guidance as to how people could perhaps work together to leverage the monies that they are already using. That combined with the fact that right now Cochise County, tourism is doing a complete rebranding. Previously, people would drive from Tucson, they'd go through Tombstone. They stop in Tombstone because they got there first. And Tombstone is an old west town. They'd have a great time there. And they go, you know, we've got a couple hours, let's go to Bisbee. They come down here and they look and they go, jeez, I wish I'd come here first, but it's too late. They're gone. They're not going to come back. And so in Cochise County, they're working together to rebrand the fact that Bisbee is not an old west gunslinger town. That's Tombstone. Bisbee is an arts and culture district. Wilcox is a wine district. You know, we have all, we have these different communities that are famous, if you will, for their own thing. And that's what on a countywide basis they're attempting to get at. And so in your position, you would be coming into that as this is kicking off really, this is a new project. And you would be representing Bisbee and putting this whole picture together. Does that make sense to you?
Much better.
Then things like the Channel Four, that's their initiative and they contact us, do you want to buy in for this quarter? It's not, it's not something that's structured out of Bisbee. It's just something that came in. And she just contacts us because I know we do like more the summer stuff because I don't have a lot of money. And so it's basically someone outside wants to promote Bisbee and contacts all these different people and then we choose to purchase that or not.
But there isn't an annual campaign that's defined my season, nothing like that. And it says, okay, we've got these spots in this market at this time and these at this time.
Oh, I think they'd be happy to do that.
So that you can pick sort of leapfrog along the way so everybody gets a little coverage. And there is a common message to all of it. It's not just a place
Well, we're all using the brand. I mean, I think that the new brand that we came up with four years ago is all over all of this. You know, we're pretty much trying to be consistent. It's just that there's no hub. It's all these individual little TPs doing their thing. So, you know, you can't really call it a campaign unless it's structured in some way. And it is structured at this level, but not at this level.
I think Fred has a question.
What question do you bring back to the cities?
Yeah, I know. Well, that's why they call it the Hasty. So have you used Google Analytics?
A little bit, but I work with the web designer that I talked about. So he's pulling the stuff up for me and showing me what's going on. We also have a videographer. We post Youtubes. He does the same thing.
And he does the same thing.
Right, so I'm writing the content saying, okay, we've got this event coming up. This is what's going to be going on. We need to post it at this particular time. Afterwards, we're looking, but those reports are going up to the higher administration, the executive branch at Department of Game and Fish as well. So there's, it's a big organization statewide. So there's a lot of these little nodes that are coming back to the central source. All of it's driven by that website.
Yeah, well, I, what I was thinking is how much access do you have to the website? Your access is through the web designer and those people?
I can post his things in his absence if you need. So it's not the mainstay of what I do. I'm there to tell the message, to define what it is that you're saying.
How they generated it, basically.
Right, right now.
I have a question.
Other hats at other times, but right now, that's what I'm doing. Yeah, I need to tell, they need a story told.
I've noticed there's been a real changeover in how Bisbee promotes itself, especially to the previous tourism manager on going out there, going to fairs and conventions and whatnot, even across the line. And she's out of the office a lot. She will do with all the fam tours. She will be out with all these writers. She'll be out with them for dinner. And there's also a different kind of approach to this and that is like the behind the desk producing content and all of that, which is sort of what I like now that I'm a little older. I like the content behind the desk. But which approach would you kind of gravitate towards the out there, being out in these conventions and fairs and media conferences?
I think you need to develop your content and structure first. Maybe that can come down the road. As I look through what I can just find online of what you have, I was searching for more. I wanted to know a little bit more about what was going on. I tried to find a calendar that would just list every, because it'd be so much easier for me to get the gestalt of what you guys are doing if I saw a whole annual thing, just a list or something. But there's so many bells and whistles. I'm going all over and I'm losing my focus when I try to do that. Obviously, I'm not the person that's just going to come on one weekend. I was looking for more there, so it's not it's not a criticism is what I'm saying, but
It's a good criticism. You're right. It's a good criticism. Sure, you'd like a lot of people looking. They look to find out what's going on here and they're lucky if they can find out.
Right, and I plan, when I plan a vacation, I recently went to Philadelphia, I planned it, you know, like three months ahead of time. I'm not planning it. But you have a different market if they're coming down from Tucson. They might just hey, honey, let's go down to Bisbee today. They're having a wine tasting and art show. Or something like that.
Part of the problem that you're seeing is you're seeing the stuff on Discover Bisbee that the city produces or that an outside group like Bisbee After Five tells Jim, we're doing this every second Saturday, every month for the rest of our lives. The stuff that's sort of impromptu, one-off things, never make it to the city. Because they're done by the women's club or, you know, by the Rotary or by something else. And if they're not recurring events, they rarely do make it on that calendar.
But you have a blog, right?
Well, the person that's doing it doesn't hear anymore.
Right, that's why we're not seeing it.
The content generator is absent.
Yes.
Well, it's not the content generator, it's also the content blogger.
The content producer.
Yes.
But all these different groups that you just mentioned, all that can be put together in one spot.
If you could make people behave and use the same tool to communicate.
So that's been a difficulty.
Yes. Is that fair, Ron? That's fair.
Because all these people want to get their story out as long as it's done in a congenial way.
I always say Bisbee merchants are great at throwing parties. They just forget to send out the invitations.
My goodness, I've got my garden here too.
You're getting a feel for what this job is going to entail. I think it could be a fun job, to be really honest with you.
Well, I'm sold on Bisbee, that's for sure. I would love to see the front end of your stuff before I'm hogtied.
It is truly a jack-of-all-trades job.
I can tell a story. I can brand it. I can bring people together. I need to understand if I can do the technology part of it because you guys are scaring me. I'm a little scared. It would be good to know if, you know.
I'd have to run this in front of the front.
It is, I do more maintenance than anything because I do, I've done half the events I've done. But Bridget's always set it all up for me and I just go in and add photos and content and stuff.
But if we're not reinventing the wheel, I'm pretty confident I can jump in and start with a little bit of a
But I know, I'm no social media expert.
Hope somebody knows the password and we'll be fine.
I think it might have a little more going on, just the password and the admin.
I don't think anyone's asking you at this point if you have the capability of building a site from ground up.
Well, I'm not your man if that's what you want. Or person. We don't have to, we want to be able to do that. Oh my goodness, it sounds like you have a lot of constituent groups that need to be brought to church, so to speak.
But there's different focuses and I think that's part of
But that's the beauty of it.
Which is great now. In Bisbee, we've got young people who are doing young people events. But as old farts, don't do as much with the young people. So it's about trying to get everybody to see a common goal and have somebody at the helm saying, let's pull all of this together.
I don't know if that's possible. I think it's more understanding all the difference.
Tell us if it means you're in the industry here. Ron, let me get that.
Ron, I've got a message. You have to get ready to leave.
Oh, that's right.
We, Ron, sometimes our committee will stay and we'll talk amongst ourselves and we'll give Steve Balkin some feedback. But we've absolutely enjoyed having you for the hour.
Thank you very much. I told myself, well, you were
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, so moved. I'm not sure I want to.
Oh, you were not adjourned?
We're not adjourning a figure.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. I thought we were adjourned.
So I can take these ones. You are most back. I can see your eyes. I'll look at him here shortly and give him back to our
You're off for your next venture.
I have a whole hour.
You have a whole hour.
But apparently I was given the message at four thirty and you had to be out of here, Ron.
Thank you all.
Well, it's fortunate you get it. Thank you so much. I'd like to move us to do an executive session. Can we do that?
Yes, sir. It wasn't agenda.
You can't do an executive session without
We can do just a discussion on what's on the agenda.
You can just, I put interview and discussion.
Okay, we can discuss. Steve, what we're going to do is we'll discuss amongst yourselves and get your impressions. Fair enough?
Fair enough would be.
Unless, do you have time?
I do. This is my, this is my day off. I can all catch.
Great, it's good to have you at the table. Okay, guys, we had an hour with Ron. Give me your thoughts, impressions. What do you think, Ron?
That was one of the most painful interviews I've watched. The question that I had was the same question that I ask anybody that wants to work for a campaign. What do you see? What would you do to fix it? Where would you take us? And there was no answer.
I don't think he answered questions.
He didn't. That's why I stopped asking.
So I think the last thirty minutes of the interview was just beating that horse. That's my personal opinion. I can't believe that we didn't have any other candidates that had any knowledge of our town, our community. He has, he has well over YouTube channel for New Mexico has four thousand subscribers. They have two thousand subscribers to the Instagram page. They have another two thousand subscribers to the Twitter page. I mean, these people are very, very active in social media. I wish we were that active. But he didn't know the first thing about their own
That department organization, that is the most, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, that is what, that is what has propelled us to this point.
Whether it's what we're, what we've used in the next ten years, I don't know. It is what has gotten us here and what we are, a lot of us are hanging our hats on right now. I know that the analytics that we're using, Google Analytics, Facebook, is giving us this information right now, letting us know that we are doing the right things and along the right path with the right demographic. We have several different demographics that we use and we can get immediate feedback on each one. We target those communities during certain times of the year. These are simple questions and very simple answers as a foundation of a visitor center director. I mean, my bar for this interview was Jim.
Right, it was all bars.
And I think that, I mean, he was not even
Let me just tell you that, number one, in answer to your first question, he was the only one of five that I would have even considered.
Why did you pull the job description? The job's not listed anymore. Why did you pull it?
Because we were doing interviews and we wanted to advance the best candidate we had.
Were any of the other five, have any social media?
No.
Have they experienced it all?
I heard that this was the best of the bunch.
It was.
But to me, I wouldn't have pulled the job, I wouldn't have taken the job market.
Well, and that's a little consequence. It can be back out there tomorrow. Let me tell you, and answer your second question. The gentleman we interviewed was confident. He was forthcoming. He answered our questions. And a lot of the same questions that we had were questions that you had tonight. I don't know what changed between a week ago and today. I also noticed the color of his face was red throughout the entire hour, which meant that he was perhaps a little bit intimidated.
Fred is out with everybody.
So I have to agree with you a hundred percent, Ron, that it's not the same guy that we interviewed. And I am just as dumbfounded as you are about how this has turned out.
I know these aren't easy. But I think that
Because he does, obviously, he does have some good experience and some skills that we need. It's just that
I went into this very optimistic, very
I figured he's
I think part of what I saw Are we going in a circle?
Can I just stand, Mr. Chairman, just a little bit more? Our website is great.
You what?
Our website is great. If you didn't see that before you
Have you seen them flash?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, really, if you look at our website, right off the bat, it pops at me. It tells me, look, these guys, not only does this city know what they're doing, but they've got, their demographic is nailed in and I want to go
They're creative.
Yeah, I mean, is it perfect? But for a community of our size, I mean, it's fantastic. We have a blog. And that is, that's in there. And Rachel did a good job on that blog. She hasn't put anything up there in a while, but it's there. There is no reference to that blog. There's no reference to the kind of efforts that we've made over the last ten years to bring the demographic we have.
Did Rachel apply?
But I'll wrap up with that. I think in the last thirty minutes, we're just
I agree with you.
By the way, we interviewed everyone who applied.
Wow, how many was that?
About five. Now, in all fairness, okay, we interviewed, there were two job postings. There was the old job and there was the new job. And we actually also interviewed someone from the old job posting. That looked like it might be promising until we found out a little bit more about his background. But everybody who applied did get an interview.
So we need to, where do we advertise?
I came in late, Kathy. I don't
I could have a little bit more there because I worked very quickly with the guy who was the outgoing, the outgoing human resource person. He went to some forms of places where he thought tourism people would go. Kathy, you have a site though that you felt that would be best?
I think there are platforms like Indeed that when you list a standard clerical job, you get a million resumes. But it's automated and if you pick skill sets, you know, like web design, blogging, it actually, it actually sends out notifications to people who have those features on their resumes. So, I mean, I've used it for the animal shelter for clerical stuff and you really have to wade through it. But if they are a match, it could bring us people that, you know, that we would never even, you know. And Dan, he's not a human, this is his first human resources job. even, you know, and Dan, he's not a human, he, this is his first human resources job, so he probably didn't know a lot about a lot of the, the HR platforms out there either. But I know that, you know, online is the way things are.
I get those notices.
Oh, yes.
Some, somewhere, somehow, like, um, resume is out there and I'll get very sophisticated notices and links and, um...
From this Indeed?
Fred, where is it?
Yeah, I don't know, it's, it's something like that. There's a couple of them, aren't there?
Yeah, there are. Why don't we track those down and get the job description out?
Can you, can you help Steve a little bit to find areas that we should be posting in? This is an important job, Steve.
Well, I think, I think it would be relevant to make the job description more concise, because it really is a longer list. But the second, the second one, Steve, is just, did what did the council and this long guy? So I think maybe that would help. I think, you know, some of the unorthodox places, local first, for instance, maybe putting an ad in the, the Phoenix New Times, hitting some maybe a little bit unorthodox that, that might be seen. Yeah, maybe the Tucson Weekly, a couple other places, small ads, they help wanted ads and stuff. In addition to Indeed, which is probably one of the better sites, LinkedIn is, you have to put it out, but it's just, yeah.
I would just expect in a director position to get a hundred plus resumes. You know, I would, I just would never take it off the market, because you do get a lot of people.
But we can put it out in the markets tomorrow morning.
But, you know...
Well, I just want to remind everybody, if I could, real quick, that the job description that you're talking about did not come from that, wasn't invented by the city, it was, it was...
But they added all the little city stuff, they added a lot of little...
But it, it was, it was input, merchant input.
It came out, it came out.
But this stuff here is all city, that's city, that's part of the formatting, the city best.
Well, you have to leave...
Dan, Dan stayed with a lot of the city format, but we've went over the little areas.
But when the committee went through each point, I mean, we, we, we're responsible for that, that PD, that position description.
I agree.
My, my personal impression of him is he's not the person for the job.
He's not a self-starter.
He doesn't have the kind of social skills, social media skills that Kathy really, really comes to rely on more and more.
He's used to being a cog in a wheel instead of the whole wheel. And we need a wheel. I mean, we need somebody who can...
We need the whole...
Is multi-passing.
We need a big wheel.
He doesn't seem to have that.
We're in a small world, we're...
What surprised me is we're all very different people and I don't, I didn't feel that he answered any of the questions.
Well, that's what Paul...
And it wasn't just one person's way of asking, but it was all so different.
He was very direct.
Very...
Yeah, because Amanda helped us do the interviews.
Amanda made it?
Yeah, you can ask Amanda, she thought he was great. We all get it.
She said she thought he was great.
Well, I'd say the same thing.
But he was a very, believe me, he was tall, he was a tall...
She told me he was the best of the five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was hoping for some, something I can't quite put words into, some kind of charisma, some kind of personality that would be effective in wooing the magazine people.
Well, that's what I was asking.
And I think, I think as a response to David's question, which is key, of working with the various writers and things, you really didn't have that kind of...
And we had a question just like that for him when we interviewed him.
And he answered it right on the button.
Yeah, he answered how I would have expected it to be answered because of my experience working in two towns where the tourism component...
Right.
And so, you know, we thought, okay, you know, the guy can deal with fan tours, the guy can do travel writers, and all you need to know is who they were in Arizona versus...
I just can't picture him taking a twenty-four-year-old travel writer to the quarry for dinner. I'm sorry.
Well, but everybody dresses differently for job interviews.
Well, no, I'm not saying that, I'm just talking about just his persona.
I don't want to wander too far off of our agenda. And we are...
We're not allowed to, she'll yell at us.
Yeah, well, it's on...
Well, we're about, yeah, we're about ready to pull in the rain.
All right, I, I, I think you've got the sense of this committee that we need to look, look further.
I would still invite you all to come over to the mine tour, please, and, because we've got some goodies for you.
I wanted to see how we'd react to a broader audience, especially now, hurry up, to do interviews.
I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
I, I, I'm planning on going to that, I don't know who will be at that one, but I wanted to see how we'd interact with the different audiences.
So probably do great, because it's higher level.
Well, and that, you know, the people, the people we've invited were mayor council, this committee, department heads, and quite frankly, anybody who has called expressing an interest, we've said, well, just be there at five thirty. And, you know, I've had some feedback from the committee and I said, well, you're welcome to attend. So, I mean, since it's a quorum-based event, we have to make it open to the public anyway, so I'm not just, I just invited anybody.
I think it's, I think it's fair to say that this committee in this town is very keen on we getting someone really good to the job.
I, I don't disagree and, you know, I'm...
I got a lot of info by text, people I can use to listen to.
I got some too. Well, and, you know, to be, to, to answer whichever question, whichever one of you asked the question, we went into this with, with, with the attitude that more than, I mean, this is a city manager hire under our charter, okay? This has a great deal more interest from the tourism component of our community, the business component of our community. And we had made a decision as the department heads that we weren't going to isolate the decision-making process. You know, I've, I've pretty much done that throughout my career, if I feel that a position that the city manager hires has a larger component in the community, to bring that component of the community in, you know, so that...
Well, I really appreciate that you did that, because I think, I love Bisbee, but it's not an easy town. And to give somebody the best support to start out is to bring people in at the beginning. So I really...
Well, you're, you're all gonna get a chance to...
Do it again.
Get to all city manager candidates, there's gonna be a public component on that.